Want me to sit down?
City Council, the order.
Please sit down.
I think we're going to go to item B first, which is the Virginia Beach Development Authority Annual Report. And we're pleased to have with us today Mrs. Dorothy Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. You all have in front of you our new annual report. It's beautiful, as usual. I'm Dorothy Wood, and I'm proud to be the Chair of the Virginia Beach Development Authority. And I'm honored to give this report on behalf of our fellow members. I would like to thank the council for selecting our current membership. Our Development Authority members believe that economic development is the key to our city's success, provides new jobs, expands the tax base to help pay for our excellent schools, public safety, infrastructure, and quality of life, which helps to continuously rank Virginia Beach as one of the top cities in the nation. I think we are the top city, but we are saying one of them. The talent you have appointed to the authority includes individuals with superior knowledge and experience regarding health care, tourism, banking, legal issues, new technologies, small and large business creation, and international business development. The Development Authority is committed to your goals of growing the city's economy. And I'm pleased to introduce Steve Harrison, who is going to talk to you about our report.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones and members of council. My name is Steve Harrison. I'm a staff member at the Department of Economic Development, and I am proud to present to you the Virginia Beach Development Authority's 2017-2018 Annual Report, which you can find in front of you. So as you know, Virginia Beach continues to serve as a major economic engine in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Last year, again, we trailed only Fairfax County. The numbers that you'll see on your screen do not reflect everything that happened in Virginia Beach, but instead it reflects the projects that the Development Authority and economic development directly engage. We announced 37 company expansions or relocations this year. That resulted in the creation of 2,371 new jobs, the retention of 5,796 jobs, and more than $319 million in capital investment. So certainly a great year. Your Development Authority is charged with driving and promoting economic activity in the city, and this year, we certainly think that it was a continuation of the success we've seen in the past decade. The authority awarded grants to the companies that you can see here on your screen, all of whom made a significant commitment to grow here in Virginia Beach. Many of the awards, as you also can see, are to existing Virginia Beach companies, which is something we're certainly proud of. And I would say one of the things that is the biggest thing to take home from this is that the average salary from companies that received Development Authority grants was just under $70,000. That represents a 24% increase from the previous year, and it is 32% higher than the region's annual mean wage. So these jobs that are being incentivized, they are career opportunities for people, and it really is a living wage that is lifting the annual mean wage of the region. And a major highlight to take note of this year was the repurposing of the former Alice Creek Golf Course into a major manufacturing facility for Global Technical Systems, also known as GTS. As you know, they're the premier provider of engineering solutions, and they announced plans to invest more than $54 million in their new facility and hire more than 1,100 people with an average annual salary of $74,000. So it's certainly great to sort of bring a new major employer into the fold so quickly. Last week, you heard a briefing with regard to public-private partnerships, and the authority plays a significant role in several of those. The Veterans United Home Loan Amphitheater celebrated its 22nd season in 2017 by holding 31 events that drew more than 280,000 patrons. Since the amphitheater opened, it has hosted more than 6 million people and generated more than $28 million in direct revenue for the city. And the Virginia Beach National Golf Course is also continuing to thrive. This last year, they rebranded the restaurant and provided more than $145,000 in rental income from the facility. As you know, Town Center is also continuing to grow, most recently with Phase 6 coming online. A grand opening celebration over the weekend of October 5th will mark the opening of the Zeiters American Dream Theater. And we think that this new entertainment venue is going to help cement Town Center as a destination for office, retail, residential, and entertainment options. So I hope you can see that our city continues to perform well in meeting one of the council's top priorities, which is expanding and creating a sustainable economy. So next, let's turn to a few high-impact initiatives, which we are working on to help position Virginia Beach for that next generation of residents and businesses, and to encourage the college graduates and the exiting military personnel to stay and find gainful employment here. The Subsea Cables, we're now referring to those as the biggest landing in Virginia Beach in centuries. We consider ourselves at this point a Tier One digital port city and an emerging global innovation hub. The story continues to be written as new cables are coming online, but our connections already span three continents. The Moraya and Brusa cables are now in full operation, and it was announced after this fiscal year actually ended, but we now know that Google is also planning to lay a cable from France here to Virginia Beach. And what these cables will do, as you know, is make us a hub for data centers, and they're going to make corporate landing a premier East Coast destination for big data firms. Our Virginia Beach Bio Initiative is also continuing to gain momentum, and work on the Innovation Park will get underway this fall. You might see that sign as you're driving down Princess Anne Road, and we are eager to take it down and put a road in its place. So we are currently working with Olympia Development to develop the first facility in the park, which will be a new 60,000-square-foot building, and it will contain our new biomedical accelerator. The accelerator will enable us to house small startups and technology companies, including those who will graduate from our Biomedical Innovation Challenge, which is an ongoing startup challenge that we are working on. And we'll come back to you in the coming months with a full report on that, but it's going well, and there's about 52 teams still in the hunt to create companies here in Virginia Beach. As you also know, Virginia Beach has aggressively sought businesses from across the globe for decades. Not only do more than 30 international companies have their U.S. or North American headquarters here, but we also have dedicated international offices, which makes us one of the few cities to have that in the Commonwealth. So this year included a number of highlights, such as the arrival of Sanho, and then the continued impressive growth of Steel and the groundbreaking for their new corporate headquarters building on their campus. And while attracting business from across the globe is very important, the majority of the efforts in economic development are to support the small business community. We use a targeted, comprehensive set of programs, including workshops and special events, and the funding of programmings by groups like the Small Business Development Center, ODU, 757 Accelerate, and more. And as you can see on your screen, we think that the numbers speak for themselves. From 2014 until today, the Virginia Beach Development Authority has awarded 85 EDIP grants. Of those awards, 62% were awarded to companies with 50 or fewer employees, and 81% were awarded to existing Virginia Beach companies. And why that is important is that 95% of Virginia Beach's businesses have 50 or fewer employees, and so the authority and the staff are dedicated to supporting those businesses as they grow and expand. Yes, Oceana, our award-winning Oceana Land Use Conformity Program is also continuing to produce results and further our strategy to reduce non-conforming uses around the base. This year, we awarded six grants to businesses, leveraging more than $5 million in investment into the area surrounding the base. And perhaps no issue is more important at this point in economic development than workforce. Companies often rank the availability of a skilled workforce as their most important criteria when they're selecting a new location for their business. And so this past year, we organized a variety of workshops and roundtables, roundtables hosted by the mayor, designed to link employers with a workforce that is trained to compete in today's marketplace. As we've talked a little bit about, the unemployment rate in Virginia Beach is impressively low, which is obviously a blessing, but it's also something that employers are looking to see. Is there a workforce here that I could pull if I moved my company? So that's something that we work with our regional partners like Tidewater Community College and Opportunity Inc. on, along with industry, to prepare a future workforce. And we also believe that workforce development does not begin after high school. Our Grow Smart program during the past year launched a new initiative called Lena Start, and that is designed to educate parents on the importance of talking with their infants in order to help stimulate brain development. And the Grow Smart Foundation Board has also continued to work with the community to increase their outreach and awareness. And last week, you might have seen that an answer on Jeopardy! gave our newest district some national publicity. As you can see, the answer was, adjacent to Norfolk, the city has about 30 miles of oceanfront and a creative district called Vibe. And of course, the contestant knew that the answer is, what is Virginia Beach? And I think that's the easiest question in Jeopardy! history. But creativity is flowing in the new Vibe District. The district was established, as you know, to attract creative industries and encourage revitalization, and so far, the results have been extremely good. This year, the authority, on behalf of the city council, also began to administer a matching grant program to provide support to small and locally owned and operated businesses in the Vibe. The Development Authority sincerely appreciates the work of the dedicated city staff, and in particular, they would like to thank City Manager Dave Hansen, Deputy City Manager Ron Williams, and the Economic Development Director Warren Harris. And so without the people listed on your screen, a lot of these results would not be possible. And at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to our chair for a few remarks about the authority.
Now, can you all see why I'm so proud to serve on this? And thank you for my reappointment. We sincerely appreciate the work of all of you in helping us. You know, the business doesn't just knock on our door. This is our staff that's going out every day. Warren Harris is now on the way to Spain to meet and talk about our new cables. It's just amazing what they do. And we also have such great people on the commissioners. We have Peter Mueller. Many of you know Peter from his work with Steel, and he continues to introduce us to international companies that have interest in the U.S. market. He also serves as a staunch supporter of our Sister Cities program. We have David Byrne, who was the CEO/CEO of Ascentera. His professional insight into health care sector has been invaluable as we initiate the Virginia Beach Bio Program. Our Vice Chair, Charlie Sale, used to be with the city staff, the city legal staff, and now he is helping us with the defense contracting company. Joe Strange is a small business owner, and he serves as champion for the small business community. Brian Cuffey is a member of the hospitality industry and helps us meet the challenges to grow this vitally important industry sector. Steve McNulty provides incredible insight into technology. Jerry Miller brings with him a practical approach to understanding development. Our newest member, Lisa Murphy, has fresh ideas and legal insight. This was another great year for Virginia Beach. We look forward to working together with all of you to ensure that our city continues to see this kind of success in the future. Thank you for your leadership and support. And I have to end by telling you, we were also in Jeopardy! this year, and we have The Bachelor, and we have the contestant on 90 Day Fiance. So Virginia Beach is well-known throughout the... Thank you very... Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Wood?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership.
Appreciate your presentation. Great job.
She does a great job.
Next, we'll go to the Vibe Green District update.
Yes, sir. We're going to swap out. We've got some folks in waiting area. They're going to come in. Kate Pittman is going to be able to... The Executive Director of our Vibe District is going to assume the podium here, and we've got a lot of really great pictures in this presentation, so going to do some catching up here, and appreciate everybody, Laura, and everybody being here.
I'll just give everyone a second to shuffle in real quick. We've brought a good group. Okay, so thank you so much for the opportunity to come and update you all on the exciting things that are happening in the Vibe District, which really spread across a number of different city departments. We work on a daily basis with the City of Virginia Beach to address a number of initiatives, and we thank you so much for the City of Virginia Beach Council's support for what we're doing here. So of course, we did just see this little clip, but I wanted to just reiterate the fact that I was tucking my two young toddlers into bed the other night when this hit the news, and my phone blew up. And it was really exciting because we are seeing people have so much pride in their neighborhood and in their city, related to the Vibe, yes, but also to all the great things that are happening here in the City of Virginia Beach. So when we talk about Vibe, I always do explain that it is two things. First, V-I-B-E does spell Virginia Beach. It's an abbreviation. It is a geographic location that you all established back in 2015, so it is a footprint. It's an area, neighborhood. But then, second, it is also a nonprofit. So I am the one and only staff at the nonprofit. If you call, text, email, Facebook, Instagram, it all comes directly to me. So I do try to stay on top of that, but it's a really exciting opportunity for the private sector to help influence and rally the private businesses, the local citizens behind this cause. So here are the district boundaries that were established back in 2015, and arts districts are not new. New to Virginia Beach. It's only a couple of years old, but there are about 500 throughout the country. So this is a proven economic stimulator. It is a revitalization effort of downtrodden neighborhoods or forlorn areas, as the pilot called it recently. And as we look forward, here's how it's blossoming before you in color. We have about 100 new works of art throughout the district. We have 30 new businesses that have opened their doors or relocated to the Vibe District since 2015. There's a lot happening here. And if you haven't come on a tour since those very first early days when you're walking around, taking a look at things happening down there, please call me. I would be happy to meet you all anytime and bring you around because you really do need to see it to believe it, and that is why you have so many pictures in your packet. So this nonprofit is run with a nonprofit board, but then we also activated the local business community, and that grassroots effort is so critical to everything that happens in the neighborhood. And so we're working directly with small, locally-owned businesses and also passionate community leaders, and then, of course, some philanthropic individuals that are helping make this all happen. So they are literally sometimes rolling up their sleeves and helping pick up our green spaces, or they're welcoming their fellow partners into their businesses for meetings on a routine basis. So I like to say that we're on a positive press campaign for the City of Virginia Beach. There is exciting things happening in the city, and it can be difficult sometimes to keep your eye on the ball and all the positive things that are happening when there is, you know, there are troubles everywhere. But we're really excited about this, these new businesses, the dozens of new public artworks, hundreds of media articles, 99.9% positive about what's happening here in the Vibe. And that's really important. Since the fall of 2016, when I was hired, we've had over 250 articles. Pretty significant. Then not to mention, of course, the thousands of public art participants that have been coming out, and then the millions of dollars of real estate investment, of capital upgrades to buildings and property throughout the district. So you did just hear briefly about that small business matching grant program, which is really significant. This morning, the Development Authority approved a grant of $1,600, which might not sound like a lot of money to some people, but to these small artistic creative businesses, that's quite a lot of money to them. And these are, again, kind of proven methods that work in other districts across the city... Or, I'm sorry, across the state. And this is something that we hope that might be able to be modeled in other areas of the city as well. So when we talk about our identity within the City of Virginia Beach, there's certainly a lot happening in the resort area, but we are very excited to be right down there in the middle of it all, in that new entertainment district. We're excited about the potential of all of our new neighbors developing around us, but we really want to focus on that small, locally business, creative business aspect. So the vibrant part of the Virginia Beach life. When I go out and talk to people and advocate for what's happening in the Vibe District, I say, of course, first and foremost, Virginia Beach will always be renowned for their oceanfront, and it is a beautiful oceanfront. And then, second, you know, several years ago, Town Center got developed, and I lovingly call it the land of the giants, and that is where everyone needs their national chains, that kind of city life. But I really, truly believe that the Vibe District is the number-three destination in the City of Virginia Beach, and we're very proud about that because, again, it is the authentic Virginia Beach experience. It's your local small businesses, your neighbors. They are raising their kids here and a part of the community. So one of the things that has evolved over time is our connectivity and vision plan, and this is really important for anyone who has come down there and looked around. The streets, the infrastructure, the sidewalks, there are ditches. You know, there was quite a bit of need in that area, and so we are addressing that currently with some of the planning projects on 19th Street and soon to be 18th Street. So what we did was we worked with the Strategic Growth Office and with the planning departments, and we looked at other cities and areas that had some artistic elements, whether it's checkerboards or different colored pavers and things like that. And we said, well, how do we make it true to Virginia Beach and what's happening here? So we're very excited to announce that we'll have four new permanent artworks on 19th Street by the end of next year. And some of the artists are here today, so we did want to mention them. The first one up here, The Fish, is local artist Oni Tony. Many of you have probably seen some of his large murals all around Virginia Beach. The second artist who's here today, Allison, if you want to stand up and wave. Allison created The Cardinals, which are the state bird. And then also surrounding that is a permanent rainbow, and we do have members of Hampton North's Pride here today. If you also want to stand up and acknowledge ourselves, wave. We're very excited about this partnership. Virginia Beach is a city for everyone. We want everyone to feel welcome here and to come here, and if you cannot celebrate that in an arts district, I don't know where you can. So we're very excited about that. It's also the first rainbow crosswalk in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Again, this is a national trend. There are rainbow crosswalks all over the country, but it's new here to us here in Virginia Beach, and we're celebrating that. The skateboarding, which, note, those are dresses. Those are women's skateboarding, which I really like, is by Rick Nickel. And then Stephen Schmucker, who couldn't be here today because he's out in L.A. working towards a master's degree in fine art, but I'm going to wave because I know he's watching us on TV. We're very excited about these. So these are going to be stoned. They're pavers that go into the ground, embedded into the ground by the construction crews, and they are rated to last 20 to 30 years. So we're just so excited about this. Here's what they will look like incorporated into the street improvements. One of the other things that we talked about was, well, what are some of the key elements in arts districts or arts destinations throughout the world? And a lot of it was that action of seeing people create art or having arts literally on the street right next to you. So we talked with the planning department about these things called neighborhood identifiers, and we said, hmm, you know, those look nice, but how can we really make it appropriate for the vibe? And this is what we sketched out at an early meeting, just a little triangle, and said, could it be about this big and this tall? And we want to be able to paint these all the time and have them rotating and be active. So you're not only getting to see it on a daily basis when you're walking or driving by, but you might actually get that sense of discovery and that opportunity to watch a local artist create it. We're very excited about these district markers, and they are, you know, sizable. I think the peak is about nine and a half feet tall, and so these will really help form that identity of the vibe. We want it to feel different and to feel cool and unique, and I think we are accomplishing that. So green spaces are very important. Some of the other elements that will be coming along and following in the next year, more pedestrian lighting to help make the area safer, seating options for people to sit and enjoy the art and the environment, bike racks, all of the above. So public art has been a big action item for us the last couple of years, and so we are literally putting art everywhere. Here's a Google map that we created to help guide people because we want to recognize that it can be a little bit tricky when you just show up and you don't know where to go. So we're trying to help direct people, and when you pull up these Google Maps online, it gives you a beautiful image of the art, tells you who did it and what it's... what's all about it, but it also kind of gives you the directions of how to get there. So this has actually been viewed over 23,000 times in a year. So this tells us that people are interested in what we're doing, and we're really excited about that. And we want to give credit to the artists and to the businesses that are helping pay to promote these artists. There are the Google shots I can't wait to see in two years from now when Google does the aerial view of all of our new road upgrades. This fence mural project is something that is quite unique to Virginia Beach, and individually, they're just sheets of plywood. It's nothing special. They're very inexpensive. In fact, the artists are not paid for this. This is a true donation, a true collective effort of the community. But when you collectively hang 55 murals in a row, you've got over 300 feet of linear art. We're really excited about that. Here's some of the captive images of people painting the crosswalks. The crosswalks have been really exciting for me because I receive calls from all over the country asking us, how do we do this? How do we get it approved through our city? What materials are we using? How do we involve the public? And we're really proud of these. These are great opportunities for kids, adults, anyone who has never even picked up a paintbrush to just show up and participate and really lend their hand and put their fingerprint on their city. And then this year, we also added sidewalk art. So again, really trying to emphasize that walkability of the neighborhood, get out and explore on foot, on your bike. We have added over 50 artworks, individual squares of cement throughout the district. And there's one of our artists doing that. Here's some of them. One of the seagull here is one of the favorites, the fan favorites. But again, these are not... they're not expensive. It's not difficult. These are quick and easy tactics to get people out and exploring the city. This little project here is a Virginia Beach birdhouse installation, and I wanted to note this because we worked with Virginia Beach Middle and 50 of their junior National Honor Society students. And this partnership was really near and dear to me because I was a junior National Honor Society member myself in school, but this really taught them about community and leadership in the community, and we asked them to think about, what if they were business owners? How do you have a positive impact on your community? What can you do that adds a benefit to your community and your neighborhood? And they did create this installation for us. And then our mural festival this May, our whirlwind of a mural festival, here is our lineup of very, very talented artists at 1701, where we held an active artist panel. And these are the images that they produced. These are large scale. They ranged from 40 feet tall to 100 feet wide, and they took over some of the ugliest walls we have ever seen. And they really beautified the neighborhood, and in doing so, they completely changed that streetscape. So when you were driving or walking along 17th Street, Virginia Beach Boulevard, the namesake of the city, you can feel a lot better about it right now. Did a truly remarkable job. And then just a few months ago, or a month ago, we added a love sign, and Chesley DeLeon, the artist is here today. We wanted to recognize her. So this is another effort to kind of tie into Virginia State Tourism and to bring people as a destination into the Vibe District. So I hope you all stop by and take a selfie with your grandkids or your kids, or, you know, you can do it by yourself if you reach your arm out real far. But we chose to place this at the Virginia Beach Public Library, again, on city property, so that is a great partnership there. And then the parks are a very important aspect of what's happening in the Vibe District. Green space is very important. We hear that a lot. When you have a neighborhood, you want a place to sit down and rest, if you want a place to take your kids. So we have been working... I'm sorry about that. On a number of key different events, whether it's yoga or sound art and meditation. Believe it or not, we have a gong master that works with us. Summer concert series, the beach, Old Beach Green and Art Markets, the farmer's market. All of these are key components to what's happening around the district. And we have two spaces. We have what we call Vibe Park, which is a lot right behind Waring's, and then we have what we call Parklet, which if you remember Chicklet, small piece of gum, a little pucklet. It's really a city right-of-way that we just cleaned up and loved and utilize now, so we're pretty excited about that. Here are some of those images of people enjoying those spaces. And as you can see, we're trying to do quite a variety of programming to involve both children and adults. And different lifestyle aspects. Who doesn't enjoy riding their bike to go hear some live music? I'm really heavily focused on community building because, as I mentioned, these are our citizens that are living here, establishing their businesses here, making this their home. And we couldn't do it without a whole host of community partners, of course. So we want you to come have fun in the Vibe District. I can tell you that leading 25 middle schoolers through the roads and around the neighborhood was a little tricky, but they had a great time. And so we really do welcome you to come, bring your families, and explore this area of the city if you have not done so yet. There's quite a lot happening here, and again, it would not be possible without you all. We have a special thanks to John Earn and Ben Davenport for everything they have done as our liaison there in the Vibe District. Special thanks to Emily LeBeau's and Ron Williams as our cultural affairs liaisons. I would welcome any questions.
Well, thank you. That's very interesting and very exciting. John, do you have a comment?
Well, I do. Mr. Man, thank you. Thanks for the council for indulging me on this. Kate had made this presentation to Iraq, and as someone who has actually been through the iterations of the very beginning of this to what we have now, I actually learned a lot from her presentation as someone who'd been that involved, and I hope you all found it informative. I think it's really interesting to note, you know, what a great boon this has been for small businesses. And I know that we... the media obviously concentrates a lot on some of the big projects, as they should. I mean, they're pretty exciting stuff when we do these big ones. But there's an awful lot of little projects and small businesses we're helping every day. We saw that in our Development Authority presentation earlier. And when you take a look at, you know, some of these small businesses that have become medium-sized businesses with very national reputations, literally started at Laura Haber's farmer's market with a card table and actually started to produce whatever it is that they were producing and got their feet wet, and then actually moved that to bricks and mortar projects that have become wildly successful, and a lot of them have chose to relocate right here in the Vibe District. And there's a lot of them that have actually incubated in this area and are actually... their businesses are held elsewhere in the city. So, you know, when we talk about actually encouraging and promoting small businesses, I think that we're doing an awful lot of great things. And, you know, I told Laura when she started this, her little farmer's market down, I think, what is it? Is it her 11th year now? I said, this is a crazy idea. It'll never work. So I was so delighted that she proved me wrong. And I think that we've had an awful lot of successes. And when you're around, especially these mostly younger people in these smaller businesses, it is, their energy is infectious. And it really makes you excited to be a part of a city that this type of thing is happening and that we're fostering as small businesses. So thank you to the council for indulging me through the presentation. And thank you all in the Vibe District for all the wonderful work you're doing.
I think Jim has a comment.
Yeah, thanks. And I do like going through the Vibe District and seeing, you know, the repurposing of a lot of the politically correct term eclectic buildings that are in kind of rough shape prior to that, and it's really neat. One thing that it's interesting you should talk about, the crosswalks have always fascinated me there and the painting on the street and wondering how long it would last. So the new ones are actually made of pavers that are the different colors. So the artists are taking different colored pavers and creating these designs?
Yeah, so there's actually going to be eight permanent crosswalks by the end of 2019 that are in the Vibe District. And those wouldn't be possible without kind of these tried and test-out methods of painting and other types of things that we've done that are quick and cheap. So there's thermoplastic, which can actually be steamrolled into the asphalt as it's being poured, which I really sincerely hope I can hop on the steamroller to help cement that into the ground. We're very excited about that. That is something that you will probably most commonly see if you've Googled creative crosswalks or in other cities. And that's, you know, it's a medium-level kind of commitment, five to 10 years. We'll have four of those, but it'll be all four sides of the crosswalk. And then on 19th Street, the pavers that we're presenting today, those are rated to last 20 to 30 years. And those are installed by professional pave crews. So the artists submit a design, and then it is translated into pavers.
Like mosaics.
Mm-hmm. Very similar.
So the artists are their theory, making sure it's done to their standard. Okay, that's really neat.
Yeah.
That's great.
Anybody else? Well, thank you very much. It's a very exciting presentation.
Thank you.
And it's exciting to see how successful it's become. And we thank you for all that you and your committee or board are doing and your artists who are participating and helping you make it a success. So thank you for coming and showing us good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will call on Mr. Leahy to do sea level rise and recurrent flooding update.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tom has been working diligently over the last, good Lord, three years that we put him into the deputy city manager's position to get his arms around probably our biggest engineer challenge since the time you all approved how we get a permanent source of water to the city of Virginia Beach. And I couldn't ask for a better engineer to educate himself in this process because you all now know how complex it is. You all know how unpredictable it is. But it's that word unpredictable that I've challenged all of us on staff to try to change because I do believe that there is huge amounts of science. And if we can precede engineering decisions with good scientific decisions or information, then our decisions will probably have greater value. And we are faced in Virginia Beach with probably the greatest challenge that this city has ever had. And that is, how do we remain a preferred coastal city on the East Coast of the United States? And so today, I've asked Tom to bring us his best shot, his most informed shot, and as much of an intellectual perspective as it is his explanation of the things that we have experienced and the rationale for why they have occurred. So as an introduction, Mr. Leahy.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Going to try to give you sort of a big picture view of where we've been for the last couple of years, where our stormwater and sea level rise studies are, and what's going to happen in the next six to 12 months. No presentation on stormwater or sea level rise can begin without looking at what the sea level rise has been. What you see up there on that graph is nearly a century of data. Other gauges confirm that data. It's not a hoax. It's not made up. So for the last century, sea level rise has averaged four to five millimeters per year increase. Today, that is about five to six millimeters per year. I need to point out, that is one inch every four or five years, a foot in 50 years. That is what's happening today. It's also important to know that inland waters and groundwater are coming up at almost the exact same rate. They're all connected. One-third of this increase is subsidence. And so we really do want to support HRSD's SWIFT program that has tremendous number of benefits, one of which, one of many to us, to us, the city of Virginia Beach, might be that it would reduce or eliminate the subsidence, giving us a lot more time to deal with this issue. You can see on the right-hand side of that graph, our planning range, which is one and a half to three feet. We are looking at about one and a half feet over the next 30 to 50 years and three feet by the end of the century. You can also see the VIMS, recent VIMS analysis that they released last spring, showing what they thought. And I would say that our ranges are pretty well consistent with what VIMS has projected. I would note that one and a half feet over 40 years or three feet over 80 years is about 10 or 11 millimeters per year. So that's right around twice what we're looking at right now. So we have put in our assumptions that there would, there might be some acceleration of sea level rise. This is a very intimidating chart. It's called NOAA Atlas 14. It is the official rainfall data that provides the intensity and frequencies of storms for our area. It was published by NOAA in the early OOs shortly after 2000. It is based on data from the 1940s through 2000. The gold boxes there are the 10 and 100-year Public Works Stormwater Standards, for design standards. Now, those standards have a goal based on trying to keep a road passable in a 10-year or lower storm and keep water out of living spaces and people's homes in a 100-year or shorter event. The red circles are the three storms that we experienced in the fall of 2016. And that fourth one down at the bottom that ranks up at the 1,000-year return period was the combination of Julia and Matthew together. Speaking of those three storms, in a period of 70 days in 2016, the city experienced three storms with a 100- to 200-year return period or greater. I do want to say, when I talk about return periods, you say it's a 100-year return period. Somebody says, I just got through a 100-year storm. I've got 99 years to not have to worry about it. And that is not the case. When someone, when we say a 100-year return period, what we mean is that over 1,000 years, you might reasonably expect 10 100-year storms. And it might be nine, it might be 10, it might be 11, but it would be an average of around 10. And they would be distributed randomly throughout that 1,000-year period, not distributed equally, distributed randomly throughout that period. So looking at these three storms, July 31st doesn't have a name. It was a very short but very intense storm for a six-hour period. It ranked as a 100- or 200-year event. There were some places in the city, though, where it actually came in at a much, much higher intensity, small little supercells that were created and caused some great impact to some people up, I believe, the north end, north up at Chesapeake Bay. Tropical Storm Julia in September, that was a long and steady storm, 48 hours spread over three days of just kind of nonstop rain, not particularly intense, just long and steady. That was a citywide storm. It was about 12 inches dropped evenly all over the city. And that also had a 100- to 200-year return period. And with less than three weeks later, Matthew hit, and that was a long and intense storm. So it had the intensity of the July 31st storm and the length of the approaching, not quite as long as Julia, but it was long. It was a good 24 hours long. And that was also a citywide event, and it was a 500- to 1,000-year event, depending on where you were in the city. And then finally, if you add Julia and Matthew together, that was 24 inches citywide. Every part of the city had 24 inches or more of rain in that 20-day period. And that would make it under NOAA 14, a 1,000-year event. Now, all of this, these return periods and all this discussion assumes that NOAA 14 or NOAA Atlas 14 reasonably represents our current weather patterns. So you probably know where I'm going with this on this next slide. The rainfall statistics for the last 20 years simply don't match up with the statistics that NOAA used for the 50 years from 1946 through 1999 to prepare NOAA Atlas 14. That chart can be a little intimidating, but basically what it is, is it a chart that shows the cumulative number of days, starting zero at 1950 and then adding up every time there was a two-year or greater storm event. And we have these charts for the five-year storm and the more intense storms. And you can see, in a perfect world, you can see these trends along the dotted lines. The actual line, which is the heavy-duty black line, that would meander back and forth, staying along those dotted lines. And it did. From the year 1950 to about 2000, there was a rate almost on the average of one, two-year or greater event every two years or every other year. However, since the year 2000, you look at that slope of that line from the year 2000, you'll see it's now sharply increased. We've had an average rate of, we've had a two-year event on the average once every year since the year 2000. And again, it's not just a two-year storm. We have these graphs for more intense storms. So the question everybody would ask is, well, is this an anomaly or is this the new normal? Well, unfortunately, we're going to have to wait 10 or 20 years and look back, and we'll be able to tell you whether this is an anomaly or the new normal. But what I can say is that those, this data for the last two decades is tracking these colored lines. You see the red, the purple, the green, and the blue. Those are climate prediction models released back in 2005, in which people were saying that this is exactly what you will start to see with the warming of the ocean waters. It puts more water into the atmosphere, therefore that means it will rain more and that will come more frequently and more intensely. So I'm not going to spend but a few seconds on this. I just wanted to let you know that when NOAA prepares these frequency charts, they don't just look at the Norfolk data from the Norfolk Airport or the Oceana Gauge. They look at gauges all over the country. They form interrelationships. It's a very complicated, very sophisticated, very lengthy, and very expensive operation. And so it's not just simple number crunching. Unfortunately, NOAA has not updated these statistics since the year 2000, and we don't have any indication that they're going to update them. But we know that they don't fit our data for the last two years. So what we did was have our consultant essentially do what NOAA probably should have done before now for our area and our region. And so what you have up there is a graph that shows that same data from their original NOAA Atlas 14 chart, but in a graphical form. And it shows just the 24-hour band. So that would have been one column of that complicated chart I showed you in Slide 2. The black line is NOAA Atlas 14. The red line is what our consultant says we should expect and plan for in the next 25 years. You can look at this two different ways. You can come at it from the frequency side, and you can say, okay, what we now call a 10- or 100-year storm in the next 25 years really is going to come more frequently, five years and 40 years, so almost twice as often. Or you can look at it from the rainfall side of it and say that the real 10 and real 100-year storms today actually will have more water than what NOAA Atlas 14 says. In fact, it's going to be 20% to 25% more water. And lastly, I've got one slide in here to talk about development. There is, there's some misunderstandings among some people that if you go to develop a property and you satisfy the Virginia Stormwater Management Plan, that there is a no-harm, no-foul condition created downstream. You've built some storage, you've trapped some floodwaters, and therefore, everybody downstream will be unaffected. And that is simply not the case. And it is a very, it's just, the misunderstanding is widespread. Anytime you can convert pervious area to impervious area, it creates a lot more runoff. And that runoff is not eliminated by storage. The storage will catch some of that runoff and let it go downstream in a different time factor than would have been if the storage wasn't there. But the storage does not eliminate that water. There will be more water. So the VS, the Virginia Stormwater Management Protection regs simply require that a pre-development peak flow, not the pre-development total volume release, but just the rate at which that volume is released, that that pre-development peak flow, excuse me, that the developed, the developed peak flow not be any higher than the pre-development or undeveloped peak flow. So here's a theoretical subdivision from a rezoning of, from agriculture to residential. These are numbers that have actually been verified by our stormwater engineering staff. And you can see that for, in this particular case, for the 10-year storm, the post-development flow or the developed flow is a little bit less than the pre-development flow. However, that flow will go on for a much longer period of time. So instead of perhaps a little mountain for this storm, releasing a little mountain where the flows come up, they peak and they go down, the flows will come up, they'll plateau for a very long time, then they'll go down. So no matter how you cut it, there's going to be more water released on the development. The 100-year storm and the more intense storms, they're going to produce a lot more runoff and much higher peaks, and the Virginia Stormwater Management Program simply doesn't even address them. Okay, so let's get back to flooding. Higher coastal waters mean more flooding. This is Western Shore Drive or West Shore Drive, and that is the 100-year storm surge flood plane. Now, we know that when that happens, it's going to be a wind-driven event. It's probably going to be a hurricane. And we know that the hurricane will come with a whole lot of water. So you can't just say that that's the only flooding that will occur during a hurricane during a 100-year event. It will be that amount of flooding. And then we have a stormwater system on there that works really good when the waters are low, but doesn't work quite as well when the storm surge comes up and floods those lines. And so we will look at, we will take that stormwater conveyance system. We will model the effect of that on how that system works when you overlay it on top of the storm surge. And you see that the area that will be flooded, in this case, a 100-year flood, meaning if it was a hurricane with a 100-year surge and a 100-year amount of rain, would flood almost all of the Western Shore Drive area. So that's the combined flooding. You have the storm surge flooding, you have the stormwater flooding. You put them together, you get the total flooding. So our approach to this is to look at both issues, both the sea level rise study, we have a sea level rise and recurrent flooding study, and we have a stormwater modeling and master planning study, and they work together. The sea level rise study is calculating the higher storm surges that we can expect going forward with one and a half and three feet of sea level rise. The stormwater modeling is evaluating the performance of that system so we can overlay it on top of the storm surge and give you the entire picture of what we're looking at. We are complete with the impact analysis of the seawater, of the storm surge analysis. We are in the middle now of identifying alternatives and adaptation strategies that could mitigate that. On the stormwater modeling and master planning side, we are underway and about halfway through these 31 subwatersheds that have to be modeled individually. We've completed nine. We have 13 that are underway and scheduled to be done by the end of this year, and nine more by the end of, by about the August of 2019. So a little bit of the results. Sea level rise, phase one, the total losses. These are annualized, average annual losses, spread over, say, a 50-year period. They wouldn't come that way. Some years, we have no flooding, no losses. Some years, we have no flooding, no losses. Some years, we have a lot of flooding, a lot of losses. But this is spread it over an annualized basis, spread over a multi-decade period. So, looking at today's loss from tidal surge flooding, and these numbers, sorry, these numbers do not include the overlay of the stormwater system yet. These are just the losses that are estimated from the FEMA hazardous model for the storm surge and tidal flooding. Today, we would average about $26 million per year on an annualized basis of losses from storm surge and tidal flooding. With a foot and a half of sea level rise superimposed on top of that, it goes to $87 million. And if you increase that seawater rise to 3 feet, it goes to $375 million per year. Not just a one-time $375 million, but that's the total losses that accumulate on an annual basis with 3 feet of sea level rise. And again, trying not to be too redundant, that does not yet include the stormwater component. We have calculated that stormwater component on top of the sea level rise for many of the big projects that are in the CIP, Shore Drive, Central Resort, Windsor Woods Plaza. We do have charts that would show you what the cost of both the storm surge and the inadequacy of the stormwater system combined. So I'll show you a couple more results from the sea level rise study. The next three graphs are three areas in the city. One is a densely developed area, one is the transition zone, and one is the rural area, and these are the 100-year flood plains. We have done floodplain analysis at the 10, 100, and 500-year level. So on these maps, let me check the color there. Okay, it's, well, it's kind of washed out. The lightest area would be today, and then you have a slightly blue, a little bit more blue, and that would be the floodplain, the 100-year floodplain with 1.5 feet of sea level rise. And then you have this darker blue, and that is what would happen with the floodplain with 3 feet of seawater rise. You can't see the 1.5-foot very much because it's kind of incremental. There's not a whole lot, and I don't know what it looks like farther back, but that's kind of incremental. There isn't a whole lot of change in the map with the 1.5 feet of sea level rise, but there is a huge change with going to 3 feet. So this is the transition area. You have some new subdivisions, Asheville and Heritage. You have some older subdivisions, Lotus Gardens, Flanagan's Lane, Lagomar. You have a lot of agricultural property in the New Bridge and Colchester roadways. So the very light blue, that's today's flooding, which is actually impacting some of the agricultural property. Then you have that slightly, a little bit more blue, that is the additional flooding from 1.5 feet of seawater rise, and that particularly impacts some of the older subdivisions, Flanagan's Lane and Lotus Gardens, and some of the agricultural property on Colchester and New Bridge. And then with 3 feet of sea level rise, it envelops everything, practically everything that is east of Princess Sand Road, even the new subdivisions. And the difference is, those new subdivisions are a little bit higher than the properties to the east, and so that's why you're looking at that. We get down to the rural area, and this would be Creed's, I believe. The first thing you notice is that they have a significant flooding problem today. The floodplain down there, the 100-year floodplain, is quite large. And then when you add 1.5 feet of seawater rise to it, sea level rise, you more than double it, and then when you add 3 feet, you more than double it again, causing severe impacts to infrastructure, residences, and agriculture. And we have, we could spend an hour just showing you different impacts, different parts of the city. That was a two-minute, that was a two-minute snapshot. So we're now in the middle of this Phase 2, trying to identify and list and rank all the adaptation strategies, evaluate them, attach some preliminary engineering to them, attach some cost to them, some consequences, some pros, some cons, so that we can get this all together and present it to council in a way that hopefully would make some sense to you. These alternatives will range from the traditional engineering structural side of things, like St. Angel likes to say, berm, pond, and pump. On the right side of the slide, we talk, look at a building that's got a structure there to stop nuisance flooding. There's a house that has been razed. Down the middle there, there's a seawall that would stop water. A little bit farther down, you're looking at a set of tide gates, and there might be a pump station associated with that and a levee system. And then down to the very bottom, you could talk about levees and marshes and wetlands trying to keep the water away. And then on the other side of it would be environmental and policy decisions, such as land use regulations, development policies, natural solutions, dunes, marshes, wetlands, relocation and migration. That might be, as properties are damaged, they don't rebuild, or there might be some kind of program that the city, just like we have right now, where we are buying properties in the crash zones to remove properties there. So you'd have something like that. Obviously, a lot of public awareness and education. And then there are going to be properties where people say, I'm staying, I don't want to go, I'll put up with nuisance flooding. So you might have warning systems and systems that would let them know what's coming so they could make their plans and preparation. So all of that is underway right now, and we will be bringing that to you in the coming months. On the stormwater model side, I indicated we're halfway through that, and will be done, be about 2/3 through it at the end of this year, and finish the other 3 by the August of 2019. These models will provide, and are now capable of providing tailwaters to developers. You've probably already heard that. We've used some of the models to provide tailwaters. They are much higher than what the developers might have been used otherwise, and that's creating some level of stress out in the development community. They're going to identify the deficiencies and gaps, what we have to actually replace and build. And all of this with and without sea level rise. And then they'll, of course, be the basis for which we prepare capital improvement program proposals that we would then bring to council to try to get a handle on this sea level rise and recurrent flooding. That's just the graph of what I just talked to you about. I won't waste any more of your time on that, on the stormwater modeling. And this is my last slide. So we're finished Phase 1. We're in Phase 2. That started early this year. The analysis of that will wrap up next month. The consultant working with the city will prepare the draft alternative document in October, December timeframe. The staff and the MLT will be looking at this in the same, basically, November through January. And then we would be ready to come and start a discussion with City Council and try to lay this out for City Council in February of 2019, and then the public outreach after that. The only other thing I'll say is that in the course of the next few months, we will be bringing you some updates on what's going on with the stormwater systems now, and some financial modeling that we're doing to give you an idea of how the Enterprise Fund and the stormwater system could handle or absorb some of these projects, which, I'll let the cat out of the bag, are probably going to have high price tags.
Say that again.
I'll let the cat out of the bag. They're probably going to have some high price tags when we try to get a handle on some of this litigation. But we are talking over 50 years, so we'll spread them out. That was my last slide. More unhappy to take any questions. I have Mark Johnson, Director of Public Works. I have Tony Alger, who heads up our Stormwater Engineering Center, and I have one of our modelers, CJ Bodnar, here, Senior Engineer Modelers with us.
If anybody has any questions, yes, John.
I love science stuff and data stuff, so good job. But I do know there's been, because the federal government has really slacked back on the research, but the academia world has not. You probably have seen some of the research being done by Old Dominion and Virginia Tech that are saying that the models are really underestimating the acceleration of sea level rise because we're seeing much greater melting of glaciers and other kinds of things than people anticipated. So it'd be interesting, when you're moving forward, is just engaging those folks to see, what's the sensitivity analysis that would drive that 3 feet to happen, not in the 100 years, but some are. There's a lot more consensus in the community that we could see that in 50 v. 100, and just what that might mean. And I said, you can't always work on fear, but there is a, the dataset being maintained by the academic world and the research world has been better than the federal government because they slack back on the funding. So I just think, and in certain places, it won't be uniformed either. You probably have studied that. The tidal experiences are not going to be uniformed across the globe either. And so we have to, I just want to make sure that we look at the sensitivity analysis of, because these numbers, I think, are right in terms of this is as best as it could be. This is the best case, I think. And I think it is a big challenge, but I do appreciate the hard work and the science behind it.
Thank you. And I gave you a USB drive that's got a ton of that science on it.
I'll be working on it over the weekend. Thank you very much.
Well, I know that we all know that all this has been going on for a good while, and I know that we've had a lot of public presentations and so forth, but it really hasn't sunk into the public. Because when we're out there talking about it, they think we're not doing anything. Of course, they're being told we're not doing anything, but, you know, they really believe we're not doing anything. And I think we have to correct that as soon as we can. You've said that you've got nine of the subwatersheds that have, the modeling is complete. And so the projects that are being designed in those subwatersheds are being designed to the new standards, but that's only stormwater.
We haven't, on the modeling side, we're still just getting the modeling complete and integrating it with the seawater rise part of the equation. We haven't yet begun now trying to detect what projects have to be done. That is something that will start this fiscal year, but it hadn't started yet. But those models are there, and they are available for developers who would want to use them, the completed models and calibrated and validated. That developer could come in, and we, these are open-source, public domain models. They can come in and they can use those models, and we, in fact, we are using them to evaluate development proposals.
But now, when we did Asheville Park, I think you all said, well, that's already been modeled, and so it's to the new level. So now you're saying it's not.
Well, what happened in Asheville, no, are you talking about Phase 1 of the Asheville?
Well, whatever we're doing, I mean, we've got to resolve Asheville Park. So I thought that that modeling had been completed.
Yes, the modeling has been done for individuals, for Princess Sand Plaza, and Windsor Woods, and for Asheville, and Sherwood, individual places, we do have those models done. And the projects are being recommended, are being proposed and carried out in accordance with our guidelines, which is to try to make them, one, resilient to 3 feet of sea level rise if we can, 1.5 if we can't. And that just gets into the cost.
Got a glazed look because I still don't understand that, if you're still in the process.
Well, okay, looking at Asheville, as you can see, the whole area of Asheville and Heritage was overtaken by 3 feet. So you're not, there's not going to be any stormwater solution that will solve just by itself Asheville and Heritage's problem. That's going to be part of a larger solution that the city might put in, some kind of levee system that not only prevents water from entering those subdivisions, but many other properties. And that's what we'll be bringing to you. We will be bringing to you alternatives that look at levee systems and pump stations that would, in fact, protect properties from this, these tidal surges and the rainwater at the same time. Did I answer, I don't know, did I answer a question right?
It's pretty, it's so big, it's hard to comprehend all of this, I think. But it's also difficult because I think we're building in expectations to people that we could really stop all this flooding if we really tried, and we've gotten the money now, we're just misspending it, and duh, 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 duh. That's what we're hearing every night we're out there. So the public is really, they don't know what to believe. And somehow or other, we've got to determine what we're, what is right, and we've got to start getting it out there.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we've got to start getting it out there incrementally because it's just too much to comprehend at one time. I don't think we want to wait until next February and then flop all this down on everybody. And so somehow or other, we, even if we just start with the basic, what we have just said, which is not so basic, of what it is we're determining, but we've got to start something out there because the public is convinced we're not doing anything, we don't care, we've misspent all the money, $40 million a year, blah, 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 blah. And there's just so much misinformation out there. We've got to start correcting it.
Well, this presentation was kind of put together with the thought that it would also become the presentation we would take out to the public and start trying to educate people on these issues. And of course, you're having your symposiums, and that's helping. We really were, we're running a little behind schedule on the seawater rise study. We were supposed to be rolling that out now. The alternative analysis has taken a lot longer than we thought it would have. Some of that is just it was more complex than we thought. Some of it is that both the city and the consultant have lost a lot of people to the economy and to retirements, and it's been hard to get all the manpower. So it's just slowed things down a little bit. And that's why we're bringing it to you in early 2019 instead of essentially right about now.
Well, yeah, and, you know, and this is sort of another part of this whole thing that I think I really need to talk about today. Of course, the next symposium is tomorrow night, and we've got to stop doing this because we seem to have a storm every time we have one of these. And it's talking, I mean, tomorrow night, we actually have the folks from the Albemarle Pemlico Partnership as a part of the presentation. And, you know, going back to the fact that, you know, 66% of the city drains to the Albemarle and all that we've been trying to kind of explain to people, but now, this weekend, we had this event, which all of the people who had been declaring that it's not the wind that's causing this water because you haven't been digging ditches, and it's raining, and duh, 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 duh. So I'm assuming that what we got this past weekend was a lot of the water that came down from Florence into northeastern North Carolina that's been coming down the rivers and flooded. Oh, you figured I was going to ask that.
No, actually, Dave thought it, it said you might, so he told me to put this slide in.
Because this is such a phenomenon that, I mean, it's very, 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 very hard for people to understand. And the good thing in this event was that it wasn't raining. But, you know, a month ago, when we had that event, it was raining. And so when you've got this water that's blowing up from the Albemarle, and you're not getting any rain, that's bad, especially when it blows up as fast as it did this time. And I guess it blew up so fast because it had all of that extra water down there.
And the wind. We also just, you just had the perfect wind pattern. The wind pattern was just parallel with the bay, just in the perfect direction to bring the water from the Currituck up into the bay. It was 20 to 15 miles per hour and steady. And so it was the perfect, that's a bad pun, perfect storm to force that water up. And this is all wind-tide driven. This actually, this little bump here, this is a little 6/10ths of an inch rainfall that occurred, and you can see, when that occurred, it did jump up, and it went right back down. It has not rained at all, and that is just three days of southerly winds. And yes, the, you know, the Currituck connects to the Albemarle Pemlico. I like to say, in terms of hydraulic modeling, Currituck is essentially an infinite source of water for Back Bay. There's, it would be very, very difficult to control anything in Back Bay because Currituck is going to tell you what happens. Currituck goes up, and there's the right wind direction, Back Bay is going up.
And whatever in the world do we do for that, you're going to come up with some adaptations of that. Well, I just, I just happened to bring this today, happened to, I planned to. This is the diary of William Byrd in 1728, when they did the... This is the diary of William Byrd in 1728 when they did the, the state line survey. And, and I think it's probably the, the record that, of, of what was happening at that time, but a lot of folks refer to it who haven't really read it. But the thing is, when he talks about the inlets, the, the Corritic inlet, which is where the state line was established, had been the entrance way for the seagoing vessels for, we don't know how long because we don't know when that one was opened. But he refers to 1713 as being the time in a storm that another inlet was open five miles south, which was the new Corrituck inlet. And then the old Corrituck inlet shoaled in. But then the ships were coming in through the new Corrituck inlet until 1828, when a storm started shoaling that end. So there were these continuous inlets that would open in storms and close in storms. And then, of course, there were a lot of other small inlets, like we had Brinson's inlet here, that would open and close, but they weren't navigable. So I guess that's why we don't recognize them so much. But we had these three at least in there that were, or at least two, the two Corritic inlets that were navigable with ships. But then when that second one closed, the, the Corrituck inlet closed in, by 1834, we haven't had any more that have opened. And now the Oregon inlet is the closest inlet that we have. And so the water has to all go all the way down to the Oregon inlet to get out. And so it's just bottled up here. And of course, everybody says, what are we, what, can't we do something to get rid of that water besides waiting until the wind shifts and it goes back down to Oregon inlet? And I noticed this, this report that you did last week that you sent to us about the wind tides. And, you know, looking at whether we could pump it out or whether we could create our own little inlet or whatnot, and you seemed to say, no, none of that's going to work. But isn't there anything that we can do? Because naturally, there were inlets that opened and closed and opened and closed. And I think probably once man got mixed into all this, man started doing some things that kept those inlets from opening and closing, and that's why we don't have any more. But we've got this system where the water can't go anyplace.
And we can look back, but you have to also look back 150 years ago, the water was lower. The water in the bay and the water in the oceans were lower. So if we took a foot or foot and a half off of this, we'd be down to one and a half feet. And many of the flooding impacts that people are having right now wouldn't be here. So, but, but opening up inlets, like I said, we did that paper, Dewberry's looked at it. We've done some preliminary look on our side. In the absence of being able to perhaps build a dam across Back Bay and shut off Currituck, we are talking about pump stations, the size of which are the typical of New Orleans. And we gave you a cost estimate for one that is being planned in New Orleans right now, and it was $300 million just for the pump station. Then we have to look into trying to keep the inlet, or if we do it with an inlet and tide gates or something, how do we keep them open? We're having real difficult time just keeping Rudy inlet open, and that's 100 feet wide. We're talking about inlets that would have to be 1,000 feet to a mile wide.
Well, that's why naturally they open and they close and another one would open and so forth. I mean, when it was all done naturally, it was naturally, but now we're talking about doing it in a man-made fashion and how difficult it would be, but it, it's just.
If we could roll the ocean back to where it was in 1800s, that would probably be very, very different in term, you know, if we had lower ocean levels, we'd have lower bay levels. And then a lot of the flooding we're occurring right now wouldn't, it would be, it'd be much less significant.
But even though within the past, I mean, we used to get these flooding situations, maybe once every five years. And, and you know, now we're having, what, we've had three this year or some such like that, and then a couple last year. Maybe it's a cycle, why we've gotten them so frequently? Or is this like you call the new norm? If it's the new norm, then we've really got something to worry about because, I mean, we can't have folks not being able to, I mean, kids can't get on the school bus because there's a foot of water in the roads. And, I mean, it's, it's really pretty bad.
And part of what we'll be bringing to you are alternatives. We will, we can, we can show you the alternatives, roads that now become levees, big pump stations, raising roads. All of this will come with a pretty substantial price tag associated with it. And we can bring that to you and we can build it if it's funded and soon we can get the permits. As I pointed out in the letter last week, that we are talking about environmental permits that could be considered epic in terms of their controversy.
Okay. Were you prepared to do the hurricane?
Yes, Mayor, members of council. I've got Steve Kovar going to jump up here, do a quick intro. We're going to run a quick video and then we'll answer any of your questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you all know, we, last week, we were here briefing you for a hurricane, Hurricane Florence. And at that point in time, we were really, the track was an uncertainty for us. There was one or two models that we were looking at based on forecasting and the Weather Service. And one model brought it in as a category four over the Cape Hatteras area and up through our area. The other model brought it in more south towards Wilmington. And I guess for us, as fate would have it, it took that more southerly track. We started planning, as I told you last week, on Saturday, the 8th of September, we started planning for, for this hurricane. Our, all of our decisions and preparation was for the worst-case scenario, which would have been a category four storm making landfall just south of us, and that would have put us on that northeast quadrant of the storm. Thank goodness, we just were in the planning and preparation phase. We didn't have to respond or recover from this storm, and that's a, that's a real godsend. So citywide, I'm just going to talk quickly about a handful of areas that, that we looked at. The citywide storm preparation, I can't say enough about our operational departments across the board, the preparation from, and you'll see in the video, from, from making sure our storm drains were clear to our public safety personnel getting ready and, and equipped, and our city garage prepping all of our vehicles and so forth, to the evacuation planning that, that we had to do based, a lot of that was based on the governor's decision to evacuate people in Zone A, to tell people to relocate that were in that Zone A area. Sheltering, we, we stood up or planned to stand up an unprecedented amount of shelters in our city. I can't say enough about our school system, the partnership we have with them to make sure we had the facilities. And we, we activated the field, the sports complex there at Landstown. We ended up spinning that up as a medical-friendly facility. So, you know, our EMS partners and, and fire got that set up. We had a tractor trailer mounted generator there put in. Our, our maintenance crews, city electricians had that ready to go. So we were, we were spun up and ready to, to accommodate people that needed that sort of service, as well as we, we stood up a pet shelter for the first time over at Landstown Elementary School. And hats off again to Danette Smith and her entire team with the comprehensive plan that she spearheaded to put together, again EMS and fire and police with the, with the animal control division. Our EOC, hats off to Ms. Sutton and her staff. We, we, we went as close to a full EOC activation as you could have without actually doing that. We had a lot of participating. Every agency in the city was in that room during the briefings and the, and the planning to make sure that we were prepared. Our communications, hats off to Ms. Hill, our communications director, and her staff to make sure that we were on time and meaningful with our communications to, to our citizens to make sure that they understood that we were as prepared as we could be and we were able to respond should this event impact us here. Both internally and externally, the communications was, was really improved for, for this storm. Outside of what we did in the city, a couple of, just a couple of quick things. Our urban search and rescue team that we're the sponsoring agency for here in the city, that was spun up as a, that was stood up as a state resource that was held right here in, at our fire training center to be able to respond across the region and the state. We, we put a 16-person water, swift water rescue component of that team went out on a federal mission to the western part of North Carolina, and they're on their way back today as, as we are here. And then our incident management team, our Hampton Roads Regional Incident Management Team, we had, we had personnel assigned to that platform. And we have people right now in New Hanover County, right outside of Wilmington, helping, helping down there. So in addition to that, I got to give a tip of the hat to former deputy fire chief Randy Jernigan. He is the IST leader, which is the incident support team leader for all of the federal assets. He's down in Kinston, North Carolina, responsible for all the federal assets out of that regional operational center, one of our very own down there, making sure that that's taken care of. So we leaned way forward on this event because we felt we had to based on the severity of the impacts here. And we were prepared for the worst and thank goodness, we, we didn't have to, to respond, as I said before. Julie, you ready for our little, little video?
The city's going to do everything it can, but the potential here is for catastrophic events.
Yes, we do have a storm headed our way. Sandbridge, Back Bay, and the southern watershed will be impacted significantly.
We want to stress to our public that the city of Virginia Beach is well-prepared.
We will be activating the emergency operations center starting tomorrow.
What we're really trying to do right now is increase the flood capacity of the city's overall drainage system.
We have 311 and finally vbgov.com and all of our social media, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, will continually keep everybody updated.
Governor Northam has issued a mandatory evacuation order for residents in Zone A. Those who need other arrangements, the city is making shelters available.
We do have sand available for those residents that would like to fill sandbags located over at our sportsplex.
City of Virginia Beach, as of noon today, opened up its parking garages.
The city of Virginia Beach, as of noon today, opened up its parking garages.
Significant track change occurred overnight. As a result, projected impacts to our city have been significantly reduced.
So in closing, members of council, we took advantage of this incident. And of course, all our prayers went out to both, both Carolinas and the other coastal cities that were dramatically impacted. But we, we went into the most intense planning exercise that we have done in a long time, if not ever. And we set the goals for our ability to shelter, our ability to evacuate, our ability to communicate at the highest level we have ever done. We stayed vigilant throughout the storm until that track change took place. And of course, we were very fortunate not to have to actually execute, which would have been a very deliberate plan. And we continue to look at our preparations. We will be adjusting some of our plans to incorporate more folks that otherwise would never be called upon to serve during an emergency. But we, we realize now we are going to need a whole lot more sheltering capability because it is going to be very difficult for us as leaders to dispatch our citizens to the West, knowing that the storm conditions to the West may be more risky, more dangerous than what we can provide right here in the city. And so our understanding of our drainage, that you saw Tom's excellence and the amount of information that we're learning about our own drainage systems, as well as the modeling that we do in the storm environment, are going to help us make the most informed decisions we can. And hopefully, our communications to you from a myriad of perspectives kept you informed, that you were confident, that you knew what was going on, and you were able to answer your constituents' questions.
All right, well, thank you very much. Having been there and Ben was over there with me in the EOC for a while, watching the staff and the manner and excellence in which they were, they had prepared themselves and were ready to perform was outstanding. On behalf of the council, thank you, Mr. Hanson and Mr. Kovar and Aaron and Tom and everybody that was, that I, that were there. It was an exhibition of commitment and devotion to the citizens of Virginia Beach, and we really appreciate it. All right, are there, before we go to the agenda review, anybody have any council comments?
Just have one, because I apologize for being late, but some reinforcement never sleeps. But the, I do plan on putting forth legislative proposal, I've done it before, but to close the loophole that allows the city issue debt via the development authority, and then all the debt would have to be issued pursuant to the terms of my CHR. So that will require some advertising, but that will be on the legislative package.
All right, anybody else? All right, council, agenda review, Mr. Wood.
Okay, under ordinances and resolutions, case six, we have a speaker. Anybody have any comments on any of these others? Are they okay to be on consent? Mr. Styles on the K1, the ordinance to confirm declaration of local emergency. This would be the alternative.
Substitute, yes, sir.
Okay, so we can just put this on?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is the speaker on case six opposed or in support?
Speaker on case six opposed or in support?
Um, sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure. Probably opposed.
Okay. Under planning, we have one item, Providence Presbyterian Church, conditional use permit rate childcare education center religious use, 5497 Providence Road, Kempsville District.
Good to go.
All right, that was it.
Great. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2 dash 3711A Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position for negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711A3 Princess Anne District Personnel Matters. Princess Anne District Personnel Matters, discuss and consideration or interview prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion of salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. May I have a motion?
Second.
Madam Park, call the role.
Ms. Finley. Mr. Dyer.
Hi.
Mr. Moss. Mr. Davenport.
Hi.
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 Hi.